2021, the order, would the clerk, please take the roll?
Dan Patterson.
Here.
Michael Faye.
Here.
Frank Ma.
Here.
Cal Ellis.
Here.
And DeFrancesco.
Here.
Okay, so number two on the item is a public hearing, it's a proposed text amendment to the Exeter zoning ordinance, appendix A, controlled environmental agriculture overlay district. If anybody needs it, there's copy to this ordinance up here. I'm going to read into the record the announcement. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held before the town council of the town of Exeter for all interested persons during a special meeting of the Exeter Town Council on Wednesday, August 11th, 2021, at 6:30 PM, and will be held as indicated above. The purpose of the public hearing is to consider a text amendment to the Exeter zoning ordinance as proposed by Richard Schartner of Rhode Island Groves, One Arnold Place, Exeter, Rhode Island. The proposed text amendment would establish in the Exeter zoning ordinance a new overlay district entitled Controlled Environmental Agriculture Overlay District, which would contain eligibility and process standards for establishing controlled environmental agriculture facilities, which provide a controlled environment for year-round production of food and plants using a combination of engineering, plant science, and computer-managed greenhouse control technologies to optimize plant growing systems, plant quality, and production efficiency. The CEA facilities would also include onsite solar power generation as a by right accessory use to the primary CEA agricultural facility. I need a motion to open the public hearing. I make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next off, there's the applicant here.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Attorney Stephen Sernon on behalf of the applicant. As the, as the board likely knows, and we've communicated through your court, which microphone is it?
We have an extra, we have an extra mic.
I've seen it from the end, that one right on the end.
Is that better, everyone? I apologize, I didn't see the microphone. Attorney Stephen Sernon here on behalf of the applicant. Unfortunately, a number of our experts were unable here to attend. When we scheduled this, there were, we were still doing Zoom meetings. We are bringing in some high-level experts from outside of the local area. In fact, some of them have to travel internationally to get here, so we were unable to do that. As soon as we became aware of that, we notified the council by and through its clerk. So we do deeply apologize for this inconvenience in this request, but we do believe that we want to do this application once. We want to present the board with a full and complete presentation with a number of highly qualified experts and address the concerns that have been raised in the community. So that being said, I have provided two, set two chunks of dates that are approximately 10 days to two weeks in length. We would request that the matter be rescheduled during one of those two periods of time. In turn, I would welcome the board, welcome the council to come to the site as a site, on a site visit or any, at their, at their convenience. We do have to set that up, the court, through the open meeting as well, though. So that's the nature of my presentation or my request on the record here today. So that would be my request of the board and the applicant's request of the board.
So I'm looking at these dates you gave us a few minutes ago. If we were to continue this, they are definitely available, these dates?
Yes, they are available for all of our experts. I, when we became aware that there was going to be a conflict and inability to attend, I both reached out to your clerk and started a process of collating dates amongst approximately eight different people, and those were the chunks that we were able to settle on.
I just find it hard to believe that you found out yesterday, when this thing was planned for weeks and weeks and weeks, that yesterday at seven o'clock in the morning was the email that got sent to the clerk about canceling this meeting.
We did find out, but that, over the weekend, but that was the first date that the clerk's office was open, so that's why we sent it in. At that time, there was no business being conducted on Monday. I apologize for that. I would have rather told the board on Monday, so.
My point of, point of information, please. Madam Clerk, when was this posted? When did we set this date?
You can hear you.
Well, I'm speaking. Have it on. Oh, I turned it to the right. See, I'd rather talk to you like this, but I'll talk to you like this. My question is simply, Lynn, for the record, when was this date addressed? For someone to tell us when these folks have gathered tonight, that the council was notified yesterday morning, and the date was set long ago. Sorry, I need no disrespect, but I think that these folks here and this council deserve an answer. Lynn, please, when was this posted?
Amendments to zoning, the zoning ordinance need to be posted three weeks, advertised three weeks before tonight, so it's been three weeks, five weeks, maybe?
Thank you. And the gentleman indicates he wishes he could have notified you Monday rather than yesterday. I just make those comments for the record. On behalf of this council, on your behalf as well, if you've come here to hear some details of what we're addressing here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
So as it stands right now, you have nothing to present to us tonight?
Unfortunately, we do not have our, our experts. A number of them were able, unable to come here tonight, and we notify, follow the normal course of procedure in these unfortunate situations. We notify your clerk as soon as possible. We are making this request. This would be a one-time request. We will not make this request going forward in the future. I understand the inconvenience, and I apologize deeply on behalf of the applicant. Had the folks that sent out the mailers spoken with us, we would have been happy to have been notified them in advance. I understand that this has become a bigger issue. You have a full house here tonight, and I deeply apologize for that. We would like to make a full and complete presentation, and we believe that we can address a number of the concerns that were raised. There's unfortunately been some misinformation that we are very looking forward to addressing very, as quickly as possible. I wish we could, I certainly would have rather gone forward here tonight than to show up and make this request.
Mr. President, Peter Lackett, your town moderator, I'm. Peter Lackett, your town moderator, I'm a retired lawyer. I'm sort of amazed to see that construction is going on. I don't know who's sitting at this table said, yeah, go ahead and start construction. I would think if you're going to grant a continuance, you ought to at least ask them to immediately cease construction until you make your decision.
And answering Mr. Lackett's question, that is a separate issue, and we have received documentation from the State Building Commissioner a couple months ago, and greenhouse construction is exempt from a building permit. That is a separate issue. The building inspector is working on that. He's going back and forth with the State Building Commissioner.
Excuse me, I'd like to speak to that, please. Could the president recognize me, please?
Please, Calvin, go ahead.
We have here, I have in my hand, based, I'm responding to the last piece that you were told. I have here a report from our building inspector dated July 5th, I believe that's over a month ago, addressed to us, and in part of his context, I'm taking it out of a whole multi-pages. Today, I called and spoke with the current State Building Commissioner about permitting for the Schartner structure. He agrees with me that this proposed structure does indeed require a building permit. Now, the other comment I'd like, I'd like to ask a question of the gentleman that's speaking here and asking for continuation. Would you please indicate to me, I'm not sure of the rest of the council, maybe they have these answers, who, who are these experts and to what part of this zoning applicativeness amendment process to create CEA overlay districts? To what are they speaking? The Schartner of construction or the concept of a CEA zoning amendment?
We are here to speak in regards to the zoning overlay district. As we said before your planning board, the four or five times that we appeared before your planning board, we have been adamant that that is our presentation.
So, so the experts you're bringing in are not related to the Schartner facility specifically, but the concept of an overlay district? Am I understanding that correctly? I just, sorry, folks, I need some clarification. I'm not sure about you folks, but I do.
Our experts are to seek to, to speak to the benefits of CEAs and the benefits it brings to the town of Exeter and its reasons that it should be applied and put in place by the town of Exeter.
Experts paid by your company.
Seeing as it is delayed, is it possible to get that information in writing in advance so we can be equally prepared?
But this isn't a public hearing. It's a public hearing, but there's no public comment, please.
I have a question for the, 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 the representative. Can I ask?
In light of this information, I, I received this email at 7:30 yesterday morning, and immediately it was sent to the town hall, called our town clerk. So this was sprung on us also, and talking to the town solicitor earlier, in all fairness to both the town and the applicant, we should be hearing both sides in a public hearing. So with that, I'm going to put a motion out there to continue this public hearing. I forgot your name again.
Stephen Sernon.
We've got dates here from September 20th through October 3rd that they're available, and October 20th through October 27th. My feeling is the sooner, the better.
I, that's why I'm happy to, whatever the, we tried to put together a good chunk of dates so that the, we could, the council could work through the availability and that it did not become an issue again.
This is so disrespectful to everybody that showed up here tonight and to the town.
Could you get a bigger facility for the next meeting place? Maybe the high school? Because I think there's, I think there's going to be more people coming.
We can't, we cannot use the high school because it's in West Greenwich, so if we post, posted this for a meeting, it would be illegal. I said that we can't have this meeting at West Junior, Senior High School because it's in West Greenwich, and it would be an illegal meeting if we posted it outside the town. So this is our biggest facility.
Can you just clarify whether this continuance that you're requesting is contingent on faulty construction? Can you just, I just need some clarity with what you're saying. Is that contingent on faulting the construction because it doesn't back? There's some discrepancy on whether a building permit is needed.
This hearing tonight is on an overlay district. It's not anything to do with what they're actually constructing. Right now, Calvin says he talked to someone on the phone today and told him it needs a building permit. I haven't seen any documentation. The only letter we have is from the State Building Commissioner a couple months ago that states that it is a greenhouse, they do not need a building permit. The building inspector has been going back and forth with the State Building Commissioner, and he's got a list of certain things they need permits for. There's auxiliary buildings going here. This is totally different from what we're discussing tonight. The auxiliary buildings, electrical and stuff like that, they need a permit, but they're still trying to get them to get a permit to the actual greenhouse. When you read the state law, it's great. I'm not going to pull any punches. It says greenhouse construction is exempt. Now, it's, it's like two paragraphs in the State Building Code.
But I'm sure that in the fact that you work together, I think that you should come to a united conclusion on whether it needs a building permit before one of you makes this.
I, we as a body cannot overrule state law. It's a state law.
I don't think you're overruling it. It's just getting to the answer. Do you need a building permit or not? And then based on that.
Mr. Patterson, are you opening, are you opening this for conversation? If you're allowing this person and then that fellow to talk, then you're opening this whole thing up a conversation. And if she has the right to talk and he has the right to talk, then I have the right to talk.
I need a second on my motion to continue this public hearing. I'll second that motion for discussion. And discussion, please.
Yeah, please, I'd like to speak to your comment, Dan. I did not have a phone conversation this morning. I never said that. I said, and can you hear me? Folks, apparently some folks here don't hear me. I read from a letter to us, a communication to us dated July 5th, not August 5th. I'm sorry if I'm a bit agitated. I'm old and I've been doing this a long time, and I don't like what I say.
Can you have a discussion on continuing the public hearing?
If we continue it, can we repost it so the general public? Because these people are here and may know the date, but the other people that aren't here and may watch to come to the next meeting because it is continued, won't be notified and will not be published in the paper?
It has to be.
Olivia, you want it reposted in legal advertising or on the town website?
All of it.
All of it?
So the people, the public will know what this council is doing.
Okay, so you want to repost it? Do you want it reposted in a legal advertisement?
Wherever Lynn normally does it, I would like it posted so the public knows what's going on and when it's going on.
This meeting was posted three times in the paper before tonight. It was on the website. It was, the agenda for tonight was posted on the Secretary of State's website. It was posted at the library, the town hall, and the post office.
Yep, if they continue this meeting, I would like.
All of that.
All of that.
Mr. President, can I speak to that?
That was something separate, not how.
I think it's a hot day, and everybody took time to come here, and it's not our fault if they can't be here. I think that we can be heard, and we can also come back. It's my opinion.
I agree, Mr. Lefebvre. People are here and they'd like to be heard, and I have one more comment regarding the motion on the floor. Oh, I'm sorry, on the table. May I speak? Thank you. He's not happy, but I'm going to speak anyway.
You're not happy either. So what do you stand on?
Here is, here is a recommendation. We had a multi-page report from our Exeter Fire District, and it is directly related to the facility that you know is under construction, but it does speak to language that the Fire District, or the Fire Chief, rather, believes could be included in this ordinance that you have amendment, that you have in front of you. And I'm only speaking to it, you need to know, and I wish the council could consider this, or I wish the gentleman who has proposed this ordinance would offer to retrieve it and, and make amendments to it in accordance with what we've been given by Exeter Fire One. I'll just read one line, and one line, well, there are so many lines. However, eventually, it says, well, here's this. We recommend the council consider amending, amending these CEAs proposal to limit overall square footage, and et cetera, et cetera. I request additional language be included with the CEAs overlay review procedure that requires collaboration review, recommending, recommendations from the fire marshal and fire chief, that planning board, the fire hearing process, language, and it goes on and on. These are recommendations that Exeter Number One Fire Chief hopes that this council will consider in amending what you see in front of you tonight. And I think that deserves this and other considerations, deserve serious consideration. Thank you, Dan.
All right, Cal, I'm going to get back to the motion, and I'd like to amend that. First, I have to ask the counselor. Olivia would request that you re-advertise, just as we did for this public hearing, if we do the continuance. And would you agree to paying for all that advertising, once again?
I, no objection.
Okay, so I'll redo my motion. A motion to continue the public hearing till September 22nd. The applicant is to pay for all legal advertisements as we normally did, and he has agreed to that. So that's the new motion, so I need a second for that motion.
What time?
A second. Any more discussion on, on the motion?
Who seconded the motion? Who seconded? I'm on, I'm trying, if you ever heard a raise your hand.
I, I need, I need a second on that motion.
Seconded for discussion.
Okay, discussion?
Well, I'll tell you why I'm going to vote no. I'm going to vote no because I wish we could instead return this, this request to the party that submitted it and ask that they consider fire, number one, fire chief's considerations, concerns, and perhaps others that have come forward. I'm not saying this is the whole answer. I think they should reconsider what they presented to us and make some amendments to it, so they might be more palatable for all of us. So that's why I will vote against that and ask that we end, and ask that this be returned or forwarded back to, to those who presented it to us.
Again, I think that you all came here tonight, and I feel as though we could, you guys want to speak, I think you should be heard, you can listen, and we can also continue.
And I agree.
Mr. President?
May you get a count from the town clerk of how many residents or defendants?
Out of that 170, how many people signed up to testify?
A total of 31.
Okay, so we had 31 people out of 170. So is it going to be a late evening? Possibly, if everybody was to speak, but we're not talking about everybody in the room. We're talking about 30, 31 people. This is quite possibly the warmest day of the summer so far, in an air-conditioned room on a weeknight. I can't speak for anybody else, but I didn't have dinner. If they took the time to come here to speak, they ought to be given the opportunity to say something. All right? Now, if, if, if the council or the president wants to set some type of a time limit like we do in public comment in a regular council meeting, maybe that will tend to move things along a little bit quicker. All right? It'll also be a situation where I would have to imagine out of that 31 people, all right, you're probably going to have several people that are going to have the same thing to say. So maybe we can respectfully request that there are individuals that want to say something, and somebody else has already said that, they can just stand up and say, I agree with what was said earlier, and we can keep some notes, so the clerk can keep the notes, and refer back to the council.
We don't have it in front of us to comment on.
Well, you hear, you hear the comment from the person before, and you say, aye.
Talking about, we don't have, we don't have the proposal. We don't have the data.
The ordinance?
The ordinance.
You don't have the ordinance?
And now we're talking about an amendment to the ordinance. Amendments to the sort of thing that the lawyer asked. We need the time to look at it.
We have a motion on the floor. You want to call the vote? All in favor of continuing to September 20th, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Does that continue? Is it a spark? Aye, good.
Nay.
Nay.
No.
No.
Motion fails. So we'll continue with this public hearing, and Counselor, I wonder if you have anything you want to add in or?
Twofold, I would, I would be happy to take, we are looking forward to working with the council and working with members of the town to address the concerns of your fire marshals, et cetera. So Counselor Ellis, we certainly intend to do that. We were looking for recommendations like that from, to reach this process. Unfortunately, we, this is the first time that we've received comments from the fire marshals and or your fire department, so we are happy to make a change in that regard.
I'm going to interrupt you because I've been in planning board meetings when they asked to, please let's extend the clock so they could study it more and study this overlay more, and when you didn't have a complete application in, when you brought it to the town council, you needed it done right away, right away, right away. And now we have to jump or wait when you are asking for it. You haven't been very gracious with us at all.
I, I don't want to get into it. I'm not going to go backwards. We've been in front of the planning board five separate times.
Congratulations.
We have had, asked for comments. We are happy to speak and happy to have comments from, and then take into account when it's comments from the fire marshal. It's the board's pleasure to listen to comments. We will be happy to listen and take them into account and to do our best to address them at the next meeting.
Mr. President?
The way it stands, we're not going to have a next meeting. This is the public.
This is the public hearing. It failed, so we're going forward.
Yeah, so this is the public hearing. There's no next meeting.
We've made a very reasonable request. The council is unwilling to honor our request. I defer to your council and your solicitors, that I think like that, I think we should have an opportunity to.
Do you hear that? Why are you whispering?
If these people, folks can't hear me, then I apologize. I will, as I said, please just let me know. We would request that this matter be continued and that we have an opportunity to present a number of experts. We believe that it is a, we apologize for making this request shortly before the meeting, but it is, but it was an unfortunate set of circumstances, and we would respectfully request the right to come forward and present all of our experts.
Hold it down. This is the hearing. That's all.
Any other questions from the council? The applicant?
Yes, I have a question. Yes, I have a question. If we conduct this hearing tonight, I don't understand why this gentleman and his petitioners can't return to their drawing board, look at the comments that are going to be offered, what we've already received, redo their ordinance, and start it all over again. That's my recommendation to this party.
Calvin, that's why we have public hearings on something like this, and exactly what we're going to do tonight. I'd like to call the town of Exeter planner up for his comments on this ordinance. Bill DeBastia? Bill D. Baswell.
Mr. President, I've asked twice before I was interrupted, if I may, ask a question of the applicant. Hold on one second. Bill, thank you. I'm sorry. Sir, you keep referring to the experts. Can you shed us a little bit more light on who these experts are? Are we talking about three people, five people, 10 people? What's their background? Are we going to, you know, are we considering holding this thing up just because one person didn't show? Or five people didn't show? Or, you know, I just find it interesting, it's very big, experts. What does that mean exactly?
We have a planning expert. We have a greenhouse expert. We have an expert in solar. We have an expert in the engineering involved in this, the water systems, the internal water systems of CEAs. We have a farming expert that will bring forth all of the benefits of these, someone who has intimately involved and aware of their use throughout the country, their use throughout the world. We have a full and complete breakdown of this from the bottom to the top. We're going to address its impact on groundwater, its impact on soils, its impact, the methodology of farming, the growth of farming, the potential for wealth creation within the Town of Exeter, the financial impacts on the Town of Exeter. There is a full and complete presentation that spans from the nature of the soils through to the long-term financial impacts and financial structure, and the benefits that Exeter will receive.
So, you had several individuals that were going to show up tonight?
We had.
And none of them could show up?
We believe that we could not.
Not one? So, in other words, if you were going to have six or seven show up and one didn't show up, okay, I can understand that. But none of them could show up, right?
We didn't feel that it was appropriate to move forward with less than a full and complete presentation.
I see. Okay. Just making sure there was going to be no remorse in my vote in the result. Thank you.
We're going to see that presentation. It's a PowerPoint that can be circulated as part of what the town circulates. Why not? Why not? Because it's not everywhere.
Mr. President, how are you? Good evening, everyone. A word about the process. So, I'm the new planner here. I think I'm on board January. When I came to the great Town of Exeter, this draft had already been in the version, on the table and in consideration. The planning board, I think, had like some four or five meetings with the petitioner. They discussed both the mechanics of the overlay, the intentions of the overlay, and some of the performance standards that may or may not actually be included in the overlay. After four or five hearings with the planning board, the planning board, as a consensus and as required, gave a recommendation to this honorable board, Town Council, that the proposal was inconsistent with the comprehensive plan, and that is required in terms of a recommendation from your planning board, who I believe the chair and the vice chair is here tonight, can actually read that recommendation in, but they found the proposal inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. And that is the consideration before you in terms of comprehensive plan consistency. To dial back with an overlay or any kind of zoning amendment, there needs to be a determination that the proposed zoning that's being proposed is consistent with the comprehensive plan. So, there's a requirement, and that's by your code of ordinances. And that's why it's in front of you today for consideration on the overlay. The overlay was brought by the petitioner. There was some modification to the overlay to the petitioner's credit. They did work with some of the suggestions that the planning board gave in terms of trying to help smaller farmers out with this type of concept. And the concept was really about protecting farmers and farms in Exeter. And the proposal that's in front of you had some modification, but clearly, there's probably discussion here tonight that that modification is either, you know, good, bad, or indifferent, or should be worked on. So, that's where you are right now from the planning point of view. And I know the planning board chair is here, if you would like to hear from them, Mr. President.
I have a question for you, Bill.
Absolutely.
With a project with a scope this big, is coming before the planning board four or five times, is that a big deal? Is that unheard of? Is that above and beyond?
When scripting a zoning ordinance, certainly four or five times is.
Is nothing.
Is not nothing, but it's, certainly, it's very difficult to write a ordinance that captures all the variables. And the input in the public process is really important, because what we may hear tonight is some information that we didn't know. And a ordinance, whether it's this ordinance or any ordinance, can be amended so that right size is right size for the community. That's why it's so important to have public hearings and public meetings from the planning board and the town council. And it's even better when folks show up to give their opinion, good, bad, or indifferent, because it is part of the public dialogue and a part of trying to get to a better ordinance in time. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Anybody on the council have questions for Bill? We're going to move to public comment. I call your name, just please come up to the microphone, give us your name and address, please. The first one is Greg Hartnett, I believe.
Mr. President, do you have a timeline on this? Or is that what?
City and town, please.
Oh, yeah, sorry. It isn't one.
Well, I've got 31 people here. I'm going to limit it to three minutes per person.
I'll be quick. Exeter 58 Pine Crest Drive in Cedar Grove, a very small community, lived here since 1984. So, a lot of people say the same thing, but let me just add this, that we live in a very intimate community. Every decision we make affects other people. My kids went to the school system, they graduated, their taxpayers, they had children, and I want them to be able to come to Exeter someday and have the rural character which Exeter's known for. So, the question I have is quickly, what value does this overlay give to all the citizens of Exeter? And that needs to be brought to the attention of everybody. Number two, what happens after we make the decision? How will it impact other people going forward? Will this be like being in the water and nibbling to your foot, all of a sudden, a shark is biting your toe? It's not so bad. The next thing you know, the blood's in the water. More sharks come. More farms are taken over. It won't be on Route 2, it'll be in your community. Route 2, the other day, there was a girl killed in a car accident right near Dry Ridge Road. They're going to bring in more, more traffic going in and out, more facilities there, more traffic. This is the gateway to South County, and we want to make it rural, which Exeter should do. Thank you.
Next is Gina Thurn.
Hi, my name is Gina Thurn. I live at 555 Gardner Road, Exeter, Rhode Island. My husband and I own Our Kids Farm. Our Kids Farm is a very small farm. We have a little less than five acres. We have a greenhouse facility that is also a CEA. We grow produce in our greenhouses year-round. We also have an ancillary solar array on our property that is net metered. All of the power usage produced by that array is used on our farm. We also dual-use our solar array. We grow produce under the panels, even though we were told that there wasn't enough light to do that. We grow produce in the aisle space between the panels, and we grow it on the front lawn. We have also personally, twice, at the last two town council meetings, both in writing and in person, invited every member of the council, the planning board, the zoning board, and the general public to come out and see our facility. Not because we can compare size-wise, but because we can show you at least what CEA looks like. We can show you what ancillary solar looks like. We can show you what dual-use solar looks like. And we grow hydroponically, and we can show you what that looks like as well. To date, three people have attended. Three people came out to educate themselves about what CEA is. I didn't start off growing in a CEA. When we purchased the farm from the previous owners, it was in December of 2007. In January of 2008, the economy crashed, and within six months, we lost half of our assets. Everything that we were counting on surviving on to make the transition from ownership and to continue to realize our lifelong dream to farm was going out the window, and I wasn't about to roll over and play dead and say no. And I fought. And one of the changes we made was to start growing produce in our greenhouse year-round. The facility was there, the greenhouses were already there. We didn't build any of them. And it was a use of space that made sense. Initially, we were growing only cold crops, because that's all we could afford to grow. We had seven greenhouses, and at peak winter, the temperatures you need to grow tomatoes goes through a tank of oil every seven to 10 days, which obviously is not sustainable. Over time, we were able to add in a wood furnace, which let us run three of the greenhouses through the winter. And as the solar array went wide, we're up to five of the greenhouses, but this year, hopefully, all of them will go year-round. If all goes well, we'll actually have tomatoes in the middle of winter. We made it to December last year. We're hoping to go all the way through this year. CEAs aren't a bad thing, and this overlay specifically has the potential to benefit not just Shartner Farm, but every farm in this town. Rural Character and Scenic Vista was created by the farms. One of the best things that we ever did was to grow year-round. I'm running out of time. I'll hurry up. I'm sorry. And solar as an ancillary net meter use also made that sustainable. I'm not addressing an individual project, but I do believe this overlay is beneficial for farms in this town and should be considered as a viable alternative. Keeping the farms alive is what will keep this town rural. Thank you.
Next is Denise and Art Salisbury, I believe it is. Okay. Mike D. Francisco.
Can I ask the last people that passed, are you for or against?
I don't think that's appropriate. I don't think that's appropriate. You asked him that.
You're not sure yet?
I've seen everything. Are you going to ask everybody that? Are you for or against? I mean, it's just.
No, but that's to get a general vote.
He can give that information willingly if they want to.
That's why I asked, and he has the right to say he didn't want to answer, and I'm totally fine with that.
I don't think we should put them on the spot. I guess you want everybody to be identified so that you can put them on the screw.
Absolutely not. He signed up to speak.
Well, you asked it, not me. You asked it. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
He signed up to speak, and I was asking him a question.
Yes, you were.
That's as simple as that, and he had his right to say no, and I accepted that.
Does this overlay district apply to just that?
No, it applies to anyone.
The gentleman asked if this overlay district applies to just Shartner Farm, and the answer that she gave him is no, for those who couldn't hear.
We're getting off track. Mike, go right ahead, please.
Mike Francisco, I'm on Hallville Road, Exeter, Rhode Island, and I'm the. Did you hear that? Can you hear me? Mike D. Francisco, I'm on Hallville Road, Exeter, Rhode Island, and I'm the chair of the planning board. And the applicant has been before the planning board, I don't know, four, five, six times, and it's been a roller coaster of an experience with different applications coming in and being withdrawn, revised, and then resubmitted, until you have the document you have before you tonight. The planning board, by unanimous, not unanimous, but a majority vote, voted to say that this application and this proposed zoning ordinance is not in accordance with the comprehensive plan or the purposes of zoning. It needs a lot of work, it's flawed, et cetera. I'm not going to go into the details, but we have nine specific comments relative to this specific ordinance on the table tonight, and Scott Millar, who's our vice chair, will cut through some of the bullet points. So, to that end, I learned to be brief, to be relevant, and to be seated in that order.
Scott, anybody else is speaking. When you do get up to speak, please state your name and your address for the record, please.
I'm Scott Millar. I'm at 247 Stony Lane. And as Mike D. Francisco indicated, I'm also the vice chair of the Exeter Planning Board. Sorry. I'll do it again. My name is Scott Millar. I live at 247 Stony Lane. I'm also the vice chair of the Exeter Planning Board. And what I'd like to do this evening is enter into the record the advisory opinion that the planning board issued per the town council's request regarding the proposed CEA ordinance. And it reads as follows. To the honorable town council members, from the chair of the planning board, Michael D. Francisco, it's an advisory opinion for the CEA overlay zoning amendment that was dated June 23, 2021. And it reads, "Per your request, the Exeter Planning Board assessed the Controlled Environment Agriculture CEA Overlay District zoning amendment, written and proposed by the Rhode Island Groves LLC, the applicant. This application was reviewed, excuse me, at our June 22, 2021 meeting. The planning board's advisory opinion complies with Section 1.5 of the Exeter Zoning Ordinance and the Rhode Island Zoning Enabling Act. The following is a very comprehensive advisory opinion regarding the proposed CEA overlay district that was passed by the planning board on a four-to-one vote. This advisory opinion adds more detail and supersedes the preliminary opinion the planning board previously sent to you in May 2021. The Exeter Planning Board has determined that the proposed CEA overlay district is not consistent with the Exeter Comprehensive Plan or the purposes of the Exeter zoning ordinance. This ordinance will allow utility-scale solar in massive greenhouses by right in residential zones throughout Exeter based on a very broad definition of a farm. At least one greenhouse, 20 acres in size, with an additional 30 acres of utility-scale solar, has been proposed with more development of a similar size expected. The following Exeter Comprehensive Plan policies are cited to support this finding. Obviously, I don't have the time to go through all this, and in the interest of time, I'm not going to read it all. However, I do want this submitted for the record of this public hearing, and I would also request that this be posted on the town's website, so anyone who wishes to read in detail this advisory opinion would have access to that. Thank you so much.
Scott, one question. You said the June 22, 2021, planning board meeting, this was done?
That's correct.
So, if anybody goes on the town website, they can look it right up in the planning board meeting minutes, then?
I don't know if the minutes is going to have this detailed advisory opinion, but I would, again, ask that this be made clear for those who want to find it easily.
Okay. Thank you. Next is, forgive me if I mispronounce this, the writing's pretty bad, to Biagio Scott D.
Scott D.
Okay.
My name is Biagio, 77 Mosciana Trail, owner of Earth Mother Homestead and Farm. What I haven't heard brought up here, and actually, in this type of scale farming down in Virginia, they're talking about a facility that would use thousands and thousands of gallons of water and thousands of pounds of pesticide and chemicals to make it happen. This will end up in our groundwater, and eventually, we're all going to pay the price. This is rural Exeter. We all love it because we love this town, we love what she is. Don't turn this into central Virginia, where it's just unrecognizable. Thank you.
Next is Linda. Next is Linda Cardillo.
Linda Cardillo, 167 Widow's Street Road in Exeter. I agree with many of the comments made, so I'll be brief. I had more questions tonight than I have answers. Apparently, we're not going to get the questions answered tonight. But I would ask the town council members... I would ask the town council members, I'm assuming that some of you are considering this proposal seriously. Otherwise, we wouldn't be having this discussion. You've already received information from zoning and from planning that they've made recommendations on this proposal. So I'm asking if anyone is in favor of this proposal that a council member was representing the members of the Exeter community. If you could explain to me why this would benefit Exeter, why this would benefit any members of the community that's here today. I would like to hear. I haven't heard how this benefits Exeter in any way, so I'd like to hear that from someone if someone has that answer. Thank you.
I'm going to answer your question real quick. Contrary of what the flyer says, I'm speaking for myself. I haven't made up my mind. But what we are doing is following state law. They have applied, there's an application for an amendment to a zoning map or an ordinance, and they're getting due process. So we're just following the law, getting the facts. Not all the facts that I would like to see is their side didn't show up. So we're doing the process as we're required to do under the law.
Okay, so no one's really made up their mind yet, or still...
I'm just speaking for myself.
Dan, you were at the groundbreaking for this. You don't have more information for her?
I'll give you... Hang on. I want to answer this question. I want to answer this question. Hang on. I did go to the groundbreaking. You don't want to know why I went to the groundbreaking? So I can get both sides of the story. And I stayed and listened to the speech, and I left. So...
So were there reasons that you heard that this would be of value to...
Ah, you know, when I read this ordinance, we're going to go through this ordinance. I don't think we're going to finish everything tonight, anyway. I mean, there's good things, there's bad things in this ordinance. Because I've read it a couple times, go through it. This is why we have a public hearing, to get both... And I don't think, the public hearings we've done in the past, I don't think any of them have gone through a public hearing process exactly the way they were written.
Was my answer to your question? I showed up tonight without my mind made up.
Okay, yes. And I hope that you will consider that with all the people here, and this...
You're making an assumption.
Since we can't get our questions answered tonight, there's nothing more that I can really say about this. But I certainly hope that as representatives of this community, that you're fully aware of how this community feels about this proposal, both from those who see it as a positive as well as to the many who don't. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next is Ted Natale.
I got my clock with me so I can time myself so I don't go over. Clean that up good. I don't want to get it. My name is Ted... Wait, I got to stop my clock. My name is Ted Natalie, 34 Nelson Drive in Exeter, Rhode Island. And by the way, I don't go for or against this whole thing. My complaint goes to the planning board. The planning board is nothing but a bench of obstructionists. When the planner came into this town, that new player, that lady who left, all this stuff was put off to her that she was going to write the plan, she was going to write the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan is the problem here right now. Nowhere along the line did the planning board ever push to have that comprehensive plan done. The reason why they didn't want the comprehensive plan done was because they wanted to refer back to a comprehensive plan that was written in 2002. I talked to the people at the stake today, and they tell me there's nothing that they can do, that that planning board has to go by this plan from 2002. It's outdated. It's totally outdated. And one of the things that happened along the way here is that the town council supported this planner, doing nothing for six years, paying her $90 an hour. And then, back two years ago, the public turned around and said that they had no faith in the planner, and they refused to give her a raise. Last year, not this last one we did, but the year before, what happened was is that one of the town council members, and I won't mention his name because I don't want to be sued, decided that the planner was doing a great job and that he wanted her to get a 5% raise, where no one else got that, after the fact that the town recognized that she was not doing a good job. Now, as I say that they're obstructionists, at one of the meetings two months ago, Mr. D. Francesco said to his people that we have to get this meeting going quickly. And for some reason or another, once again, Scott Millar stepped up and decided he would be an obstructionist. He read for 35 minutes something that I guess the people on the planning board were not capable of reading themselves. So what's happened is every time we get into this situation, the planning board says, well, we have a comprehensive plan, 20 years old. And so by doing this, what they have done to the people of Exeter is they have made sure that the people could not have what they want, but rather what Mr. DiGareo wants. And it's not right. You look at the amount of lawsuits that have come up relevant to Mr. DiGareo and the planning board, and his trying to stop everything that's going on that the people don't like. Well, it's not going to happen much longer. This planning board is the problem. It's not the overlay. It's not the solar. It's everything else. What they have done is they've turned around and they've destroyed the town's purpose.
Okay.
Good evening. Scott Gabbett, Exeter Number One, Fire Chief. I'm not opposed to this. I'm not opposed to this. I'm not for this. My concern is public safety. What's going on on Route Two is too big for your Exeter Fire Department to handle. I want to make sure that's on record. The town council has gotten a letter from me already stating my concerns, and that's my biggest concern, that we cannot effect a rescue if this place is on fire. Greenhouses do burn. We don't know what they have inside of them.
Okay, I'm going to talk really loudly into the microphone. Can everyone hear me? Okay, great. Little background, I've lived in, I'm sorry, 45 Milpon Road in Exeter. I've lived in Exeter for 20 years, but I grew up in Newport. So I've seen what can happen to communities and how they change over time, both for good and for bad. So I would have to say that when I look at the proposal for the zoning amendment, I think about how it could change the rural character of Exeter. I think that's kind of what we're hearing from the planning board. And I think about what is the potential benefit for the town as a whole, for everyone. And I haven't really heard much of anything about that. So that's kind of how I look at this. I think it has a tremendous potential for private benefit for the owners of the land at some public cost. So that's my take on it.
We're probably going to pronounce this one wrong. Tracy Aquario.
Aquaro P. Thank you. Tracy Aquaro P., 50 Milpon Road. I agree with pretty much everything that Barbara said. I moved to Exeter for the rural residential community. I don't want to live in Warwick. I don't want to live in Groddines. I want to live here, and I don't want the nature of our community to change. I also don't see how this changing to our ordinance to benefit one individual or a small group of individuals is going to benefit the community at large. That's not clear to me. So I would be opposed to this.
Good evening. Good evening, folks. Good evening, council. Thank you for letting me be here tonight to address the audience. Thank you. Want to thank everybody here, masked, unmasked, everybody. You know, it's nice to be a little bit of a part of a community. So I'm Bill Stamp. I'm not that guy. I'm Bill Stamp III. I have kids. I have eight kids. Big family. I don't live in Exeter. I live in Cranston. I live in the middle of an industrial park, but I own a piece of land here in Exeter now, so on South Road. I asked town if I had a vote, and I really don't have a vote here, but instead if I pitch a tent, maybe I could get it. So I'm working on coming down here because I really like the community aspect of things. You know, in Cranston, you know, you'd have a lot more people to address for any land use issues. We're here talking about land use planning, and I've been involved in Farm Bureau my entire life, so has my dad. And today, I got the Bible of Farm Bureau out, the policy book of Farm Bureau. So I'm speaking here for Farm Bureau members and farmers across the nation, talking about land use planning. And in the policy book, this is brass boots guys from all over the country that sit down and put together policy for land use planning, and they find that the best land use planning is right here at a local level. Anything more than this becomes dangerous because farmers have equity in their land, okay? And that equity is part of the community, but we're in control of it, okay? So this is where discussion should take place for this sort of thing. Now, in Rhode Island, we don't have any big farms. A lot of people I know, even in this room, might be called a covert farmer, a big farmer. And really, I'm really not a big farmer. I'm a real small farmer, just trying to survive with eight kids, my wife. I got a good education to farm. Both of us went to Cornell and had expectations with land to have asset value, to do something to make the farm community progress in our community in Rhode Island. But we've had externalities, and I don't want to get into those, that have kind of delayed us or even taken away a lot of that ability. I'm getting older. I don't know how much I can do as I go forward. I do have grandkids, six of them, so you never know from that standpoint. But I guess this is a farm concern, a farmer concern, and a personal concern, because most people don't understand how this rural character gave us in our state, in our communities, and even in our nation, the ability to economically progress for all you people to move out to Exeter. You know, we've owned land here for a while, and we've owned land in Cranston. I've been a farmer all my life, and we've farmed there, and we're trying to farm down here. We've had to move around because of a lot of new people in the network that need jobs and opportunities and need housing. Okay, I guess we're all part of the problem. I farm in greenhouses, controlled atmosphere greenhouses. It's a progressive edge to get into and produce in the future. We need to address this. Actually, it's been a concern for government. I know that the past administration passed some legislation to try to invigorate this community in Rhode Island to produce more of our food. These controlled atmosphere greenhouses are going to do that. Now, I guess the question of how and who you want to let do that is here at the local level from that standpoint. It's your decision. But we need to address it, and we need to address it as a community, and that's what we're here for and talk altogether. That's my spiel. You can take it for what it's worth.
Thank you. Next up is Jeffrey Reyna.
I agree with what's been said.
Okay.
Jason Whitford, 201 Brandon Street, Milpon, Wisconsin. My family's been here for 200 years. They own 100 acres of land here, five houses, and I love this town. And somebody's been asking, how does everybody benefit? Well, you've got a field full of solar panels. Chances are, you're not going to have to send a rescue or send a fire truck or have any educational cost. So that's how everybody benefits. I just don't understand. We're talking about tomatoes here, and we all want to be able to afford to live here. And I'll tell you, I'll give you a prime example. We had a council member sit on here not too long ago, and well, he came from the big And I ain't trying to point anybody out, but I'm just telling you, he came here, and he didn't realize we had a police department. So how many people in this room would like a police department?
No.
All right, then. So you got to, I mean, what I'm saying is, if you want to keep the rural character, you got to work with these guys. You got to work with Schartner. They've been in this town for a long time. They're not going to contaminate their ground. They're going to do the right thing. They've always done the right thing, as far as I know, in Exeter. And I think that these two projects, I visited Gina today to see hers, and I think it's wonderful, and I think it would benefit everybody in town. And another thing, we're talking about across from the transfer station just really quick. People say you can't build there. You can't build there. We'll go down and Deere Brook Estates and see what happened. There was a council that sat here years ago, and they, there was five people on a road that complained, and complained, and got the town, and they take lawsuit. And what do we end up with? Take a ride down there, see what we ended up with. Because that's not what Exeter is about. That's not what rural character is about. So, you know, I'm just, let's think about this, and this is Exeter. I hope that we all love Exeter. And the only thing I want to say in the end is, come, I want these, because I don't come to the meetings, but I listen, talk, but don't come here because you've got a pamphlet in the mail. You should come here because you pay taxes and you say that you love the town. Because I've been through this. I've been having pamphlets set on me before. I was on the town council, the planning board, my father's on the zoning board. You should come to the meetings, and that way there, you'll understand more of what's going on. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Okay. The next name here, two of us have looked at it. I cannot make out the last name. The first name is Joe, and it begins with a T. Hold on. Okay. Steve Kelly.
Asa Davis, 146 Beach Wheel Trail. CEA is a method of farming or agriculture. CEA is a method of farming or agriculture. It's not a use. It's like a cell phone is a method of communication, or an LED bulb is a method of making light. CEA uses greenhouses. Greenhouses are already permitted by our zoning code as in agricultural use. On-site power generation for your own consumption is also already allowed, regardless of whether the system is CHP or not. Typically, this is done with a diesel gen set or a small turbine, depending on the power required. The only thing new or different here is the use of solar panels to generate electricity. And that's what's got the opposition up in arms, claiming the sky is falling and this is going to destroy Exeter's farms and forests. No, it isn't. As you've already heard with Gina and with Bill, CEA is already here. Since all of this stuff, with the exception of the solar component, is already allowed, if that was going to happen, it would have already happened. Permitting someone to generate electricity with solar panels instead of an engine isn't going to change that. This isn't an industrial use. Growing plants is agriculture, not manufacturing. It doesn't matter if it's hydroponic or conventional. If the critics are concerned about preserving farmland for future generations, they should be all for this, because the best way to conserve a resource is not to use it. And other than getting locked on, CEA doesn't use the soil at all. And no, it doesn't ruin soil. Like most buildings and structures, they come down a lot easier than they go up. So removing a greenhouse and reverting to farmland is a pretty simple task. CEA conserves space, water, fertilizer, and pesticide use. Studies indicate a twentieth of the land space, a tenth of the water use, a twentieth of the fertilizer use, and almost nonexistent pesticide use. What's not to like? Care about the soil and fresh water and resources for future generations, you should be an advocate. We should be encouraging adoption, not discouraging it. The whole debate does point out one hole in our ordinances, which is the definition of utility scale based on the amount of power generated, not power exported. If all the power is consumed on-site, used to offset utility consumption, and there's plenty of space for the setbacks, panels, and coverage ratios, who cares if it's five or 13 acres on 100-plus acre site? This is a far cry from the Revity project along 102, which calls for 50% coverage, 59 acres of solar area, quadruple the Shartner generation with 100% of the power exported, and yet that project received Planning Board master plan approval last meeting, and the Planning Board is against this CEA proposal? All it does is point out how hopelessly antiquated our comp plan is. While Bill DePiscual now has things pointed in the right direction, the Board continues to use the obsolete plan to pick and choose which project to support, which ones to deny, often using the exact same references. Application of the comp plan should be consistent and even-handed, not arbitrary and capricious. Solar power for electricity generation is here to stay, just like cellphones and LED light bulbs are. Stats show it's already the safest and cleanest method of electricity generation known to man, and it's on its way to becoming the least expensive. In fact, in some areas where it's been more widely adopted, like Germany, California, Connecticut, at some times, it's already driven the spot price for electricity negative. I expect future generations are going to look back on our use of fossil fuels for electricity generation, the same way we look on past generations hunting whales for lamp oil. This CEA ordinance shouldn't be needed at all, but here we are. Since CEA is scalable from a closet-sized greenhouse to many acres, this has wide appeal to anyone who might grow crops in Exeter.
Hey, Asa, you got to wrap it up real quick, please.
Full-time or not. I encourage the council to adopt this ordinance, just as I encourage you to deny the upcoming Revities on the change proposal.
Next is Brian Schroeder.
Hi, everybody. My name is Brian Schroeder. I'm at 109 Sundown Road. I came here to listen to all the facts, and, you know, I'm sorry I didn't get to hear, you know, what they were planning on doing from all of the experts, but you've got to be prepared on game day. So I feel that, you know, one of the things is, I know in small size, it is good, it sounds like good. We heard a presentation right here, but how about big size? You know, what about when it gets bigger and how far we're going to allow it to get? I think we ought to look at some other areas where this type of farming is being used to understand, you know, what the impact is on the land. And then also, what is the benefit to the town? You know, where does the town really want to go? And that is part of what we're doing in the planning phase. You know, our town should do the planning and understand where we want to take the town. And, man, I am so glad to see everybody here. This shows people are getting involved, and we need to be involved. Thank you.
Next is Gerard Bové. How about Joel Littlefield? Okay, thank you. Suzanne Takeley.
Hi, Susannah Takeley, 750 Hattery Road in North Kingstown. I came here to get information because I live directly across from where this is proposed. I have great respect for Shartner family, Stamp Farm. My kids have done your hayride the whole time they grew up. So I want them to be successful, but I do have concerns. I do worry about the traffic. I'm going to echo that concern. We're not talking about cars. We're talking about trucks on Route 2. We all saw that fatal accident just yesterday. I am concerned that this is a massive facility going in right across from residential neighborhoods. My son's going to be riding his bike across from this massive facility. Again, if I wanted to live in Warwick, I would have bought there. I am worried about my property value. And I would say my biggest concern is, are there stipulations on what is going to be grown in the greenhouses? If you look this company up, marijuana is one of their crops. Can you put any stipulations that it won't be grown with the dispensary? Again, I'm looking for answers. Thank you.
When we get done with public comments, we'll be discussing quite a few things, so. Next is Robert Whitson.
Good evening. My name is Robert Whitson. I live at 67 Whistling Highway in Exeter. A couple of points I'd like to make tonight is, first of all, I hear a lot of confusion about what is actually going on with respect to this project. I don't understand how this project is progressing. We still have so many questions about what's the environmental impact, what is the economic impact, what is the safety impact? A lot of these things are done well in advance of any zoning commission or building commission granting a project like this to move forward. We're inviting big agriculture, corporate agriculture, and this is a Dutch firm that's coming in here to set this operation up. I don't know whether they're leasing Shartner farm property. I don't know whether they're selling that farm to them. I don't know. So there's a lot of questions that need to be answered here. I think we need to hear from the building commission and the zoning commission about how this project got started and why are we at where we are with this project. And a lot of people in this room tonight showed up because they had a lot of concern, a lot of questions about traffic, about safety, about the environmental impact. What is the benefit to the town economically? Why are we granting this? And who's benefiting from this? It sounds like big agriculture is benefiting from this. CEA may be a very good concept and benefit to a lot of the small farms in this town, but when you have a big conglomerate coming in here like this, where it just says, well, we have open access to go on and do whatever we want further down the road, where does it stop? And how many farms get bought up and taken over by these big agricultural firms because they have the money and the little farms struggle because of them? I'm all for farming. I love farmers. I love the fact that we get our food from them, but we need to protect their capability going forward as well. Thank you.
Next is Judith Willfield. Todd Snow. Nancy and Jeff Wolscroft. I can't read the last name.
Jeff Wolscroft, 237 Esquie Hill Road, Exeter. I worked for, retired now for a large construction firm. Every time I, we had somebody come, they were well-prepared. The ones that weren't well-prepared were the ones we didn't want to deal with, because you're going to get into this project and they're not going to be well-prepared. They're going to be doing things that they shouldn't be doing. They're probably doing things out there now that they shouldn't be doing. Just been there, done that. Thank you.
Next is Evan Randikir.
Good evening. I appreciate the opportunity to be here and be all together and share our comments. And how are you, yourself? I'm Exeter, Rhode Island, Mill Pond Road. Evan Randikir. My wife Laura Randikir. I just have a minor comment. The name of this, at least on this paper, is Controlled Environmental Agriculture System. And I just would like to say, I think the name should actually be Controlled Environment, Controlled Environment Agriculture System, not Controlled Environmental. Just, I think it reflects, it's kind of nuanced, but I think it's important. So instead of Controlled Environmental, I think it should say Controlled Environment to better reflect what they're proposing to do. Just a minor comment, not necessarily a poser for it, but obviously concerned about what happens in the town and for everybody, so thank you.
Next is Ruth Gordon.
Usually you can hear me without a mic. I have to talk over even the pets. I'm Ruth Gordon. You still want to hear me? I would be Ruth Gordon. Hello, I'm Ruth Gordon. I live on 191 Tenrod Road in Exeter. I love this town, and I trust that our board will make the right decisions helping this farm. I love farms. I'm hoping I could turn my place pathway into a farm. I know nothing about agriculture. I take care of pets. I take care of a lot of your pets in this community and around the state, and I absolutely love it. I love going to Emma's farm. I got to get more up to our kids' farm. It gives me a thrill to know people are growing things so that we can survive. And I look forward to healthy, good food, which sounds exactly what this facility will do. I appreciate everybody being here and voicing their concerns, but I'm not going to say how I feel right now. I just love a farm. I can't grow anything. Thank you very much for coming, and I appreciate being able to make a few comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Hillary Felsenfeld.
Hi, my name is Hillary Felsenfeld, and I live at 10 Quail Hollow Drive in Exeter. My biggest concern, I moved out here from North Kingstown, and I moved out because North Kingstown is full of lights, especially at night. I like it dark. We have a million-square-foot building going in, three stories tall, that's going to be operating 24 hours a day. It's a giant orb at night. I have real concerns for the animals and the wildlife, because I love my bats. I love my flying squirrels. I, the celestial navigators at night, I love the migratory birds that come by. Something that's glowing 24 hours a day with a solar field just as massive, what is that doing? What is the environmental impact going to be for not just our waterways, but for all the wildlife in the air, on the ground? You've got herbicides, you've got pesticides. I respect farming. I love farming. I have a tiny little farm myself on my little five-acre plot. Something of this magnitude of a million square feet in our tiny rural town is almost preposterous. It's preposterous. I respect farmers. I love them. We need them, but this is just over the top. And I do not feel between 102 and Route 2 that we can handle the traffic, and it will completely ruin the integrity of this town. So I'm voicing my opinion. I'm not for it, but just please know for all the farmers that are out there, I love you guys, and I appreciate everything you do, but something larger than the Warwick Mall is just not sustainable, I believe, in the town of Exeter.
The last division we have is Tim Shartner.
Evening, folks. I know it's hot. Won't take too much of your time. Okay, so my name's Timothy Shartner. I am the third of seven boys, fourth generation at Shartner Farms. I'm buying from my father 256 of the family's property, from 102 to right about to Dry Ridge Road. And I have some other families in there, in between that, of course, the Stamp Farm, the Colleens and the Hembleys. And we've been farming together for years, generations, way before my time. And, you know, things are getting expensive, right? And we've got encroaching development. We have all these pressures on us, and we've got, the generations are getting larger. And so I was looking for a way not to build houses and to buy my family farm. The agricultural value is a lot less than the commercial value. And what I found was CEA. And CEA is really how Europe spent. We actually get a lot of, eat a lot of the food from it here. We only produce 1.6% of what we consume in our, in agricultural products. We really don't grow our own food, and I think we should. I also think 25 acres is, well, I know, 25 acres is the smallest viable CEA size that of the technology that I'm using. Now, if you look at it like a building instead of a glass-covered field, well, it seems big. But if you look at a 25-acre field of tomatoes, it's actually not big at all. As a matter of fact, 25 acres of the 256, okay, to save all the difference in field crops, get rid of all the perchests in the front, keep the vistas, I pushed it all the way back and sank it down so it nestled in, it's going to have a nice front, and it's going to be charming. And if you don't think so, then in the next meeting, you'll see the plans. Now, it has a blackout curtain, so the light pollution is less than Route 2. Okay? So I understand your concerns when it comes to water. It uses 2% of the water of traditional agriculture. It strips carbon and emits oxygen equal per square meter to our forest. It's equal in its entirety to taking 6,000 carbs off the road. That's because it's a negative carbon footprint. It's actually an incredible thing. And when you all, and I know you've got a fire in your bellies because of... And when you all, and I know you've got a fire in your bellies, because a fire went out. What's interesting is the architects of that fire knew all those points were incorrect, because we've been working together for three years. But I'll leave that to you, because we'll peel this onion together, and you'll be able to determine yourself. I'm not going to try to convince you. Conviction comes from within. I'm going to just let the evidence fall the way it falls. So we're going to have another meeting. Is that right, Steve?
We have to make that request to the council, and we're hopeful that they'll give us an opportunity to present all the testimony and the experts that we have and have prepared and look forward to presenting to them to address the concerns both the public has raised and council members have raised.
Okay. So I'm here, I'm approachable, and I'm not going anywhere. I love my town, too. I love the vistas. I'm, you know, going to preserve the corner. I got a lot, we got a lot going on to make it charming down there. And if you let me reveal the plan and let this onion peel, you'll see that.
Peter, you have a question?
Okay. Mr. Chairman, Mr. President, I didn't realize there was a sign-up sheet here. I had a couple of, just a couple of questions. I'm Peter Locketture, Summit Board. And I'm also a member of Exeter Volunteer Fire Company Number Two. I was president for many, many years until just this last election, when I retired from that as well. One question I would have for the applicant is, how much water would you need if you have a fire in a facility this size? I've heard, I've heard an estimate of 350,000 gallons of water per minute. I'm not sure where you get that, that type of water, that quantity of water. They apparently don't have any plans for sprinklers or fire alarm. And I've heard that the plan, the tomatoes are a stalking horse, or some more valuable crop that they might be growing in the future. I would, I would point out the language in the ordinance refers to many premium edible ornamental and high-value plant species. So apparently, we're talking about the premium, high-value plant species. I would hope that if the council approved this, you'd limit it to food. Maybe even fruits and vegetables. Okay, I appreciate that. You know, the other questions, light pollution, traffic, those are all questions that the council have to deal with if they're going to consider this. But I think the public safety aspect of it is what you really ought to be concerned about. If that building catches on fire and somebody's down in the building, just imagine looking for somebody in 24, 25 acres of tomatoes or other high-value crops. Thank you.
We have two more people, two more individuals, three more. Please state your name and address for the record, because we do not have you on the sign-up sheet.
So I'm Mike Surulow, 61 William Reynolds Road in Exeter. And I was on the council in 2002 in the comprehensive plan we were talking about, it's passed. And I don't want to get into much more detail than that, but I'm going to talk about two things. I also was the moderator for the Exeter Fire District, and it was our council that helped the Exeter Fire District come to being. So my perspectives, for example, are consistent with the question. So let's start with the water question. Okay, my wife bicycles in the Ladd Center. And a week and a half ago, she drove through there on her bike and found a whole bunch of Quonset Water Facility people surveying the Ladd Center. And we've got a right to ask the question beforehand, because that's our actuafer. What, what is going to happen with that water? Is that the water that these, that the developers are expecting to meet the gallonage requirement that Mr. Locketture was talking about? That's a question that's legitimate. They've been trying, North Kingston's been trying to get that water for as long as I've been in this town. And, and as I understand it, longer than that. We had to fight that during the council I was on as well. The second thing I want to address is the damage this facility is going to do unless we limit it to food and fruit. Now, most of you know, I've spent a little time thinking about marijuana, marijuana policy. And I've studied water usage for marijuana plants. I'm involved right now in the conversations about where legalization is going to go. And I can tell you this. First off, if there's a marijuana grow that size here, it's going to wipe out all of the small farmers that are already heavily invested in appropriate-sized marijuana, whether it's CBD for non-psychoactive purposes or the stuff to get you high. So we're talking about a potential, how many different marijuana grows are there just around here? My last count was there are six. There are six farms that are going to go out of business. And they've invested huge amounts of money already at the proper scale. The other thing you've got to know is there aren't going to be new grows in whatever legislation passes. There are not going to be new grows allowed in our areas. All those new grows are supposed to be reserved for communities of color and other communities that were highly impacted during the war on drugs. That's no longer a problem yet. So here's, every one of the proposals that are out there right now, that may or may not pass in the next session, that's all going to be discussed for the end of, the end of this year. All of those proposals, none of them are going to support expansion at that level. And as we've heard before, this tomato operation is absolutely a stalking horse. There's no question about it. If you look at what happened in Canada with a grow this size, so a tomato grow this size.
Okay, Mike, I can wrap it up.
Well, thanks very much for listening.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Craig. I'm on 175 Stony Lane, and I also own property on Widow Suites Road. I, I wanted to speak because I feel like a lot of different aspects to this project have been brought up, and I, I really feel like they need to be put together so that somebody other than the town council can, can really weigh in and sit and ponder. The planning board has already said that they are not in favor of this project. There are many questions about this project that seem, the order of operation seems backwards to me. Why would you build a solar facility before you built the agricultural operation? Why is there not an environmental impact assessment plan? Why do we not have any documentation about alternative energy sources? This type of operation is used in places like Iceland, but they use geothermal heat. So you don't have a 25-acre solar farm. Has that been investigated? Are there other options that were put together before this plan got thrown out? I feel like it's a very difficult decision for the, for the planning board and the zoning board and the town council to make these decisions without all of that information. I didn't see it in any of the documentation online. I worry about water quality, like many people who've brought up here. I don't have any sense of what the scale of water usage is. I think there are a lot of concerns about the usage of pesticides and herbicides in maintaining solar fields themselves. There are a lot of people who bring up concerns about what's happened in West Greenwich. People's wells running dry because large-scale solar operations have changed groundwater flow. I don't think we have that information in hand, and I think that's one of the reasons why there's so many people here in Seating, including myself. To me, the new Exeter Mall, which is what it sounds like, will fully eclipse the old Exeter Mall. I don't know that, I don't know that it's, it's something that people are for or against. I don't have a handle on why supplying tomatoes for New York is my prerogative and how, how I should be supporting that business. National Grid has given multiple incentives to this business. What are the incentives to the town? Is there any kind of bonding associated with any kind of environmental damage that's done in terms of decommissioning? Not just how it will be decommissioned if the solar field does get built and eventually has to be decommissioned? Who's going to pay for that? What additional costs are going to be included in that? I, I think that it's a largely unanswered question. I've spent a lot of time trying to find that information all over the internet. What's the impact to groundwater? What's the impact to water quality? What's the impact to air quality? I don't believe that the long-term carbon storage is equivalent to the forestry that you mentioned. I think short-term, probably yes. Forests are very large, long-term carbon storage facilities, so I think that's a specious argument. And overall, I, I think that farming is the heart of Exeter, and I do think we can find a way to do this without destroying our environment. But I think that making that decision without all of the information is, is a poor thing to do. Thank you.
Two more people standing, and that will be it on public comment. I'll come right out of here.
Mr. President, I just have one question. Mr. President?
Frank.
I just have one question.
You got to hold the mask down. I can't understand if we're across the room.
Will you have commentary?
We're going to listen to the last two, we're going to listen to the last two speakers, then we're going to start some discussion here at the council level.
Maybe when it's continued to the next meeting, we can have a...
We're going to try and continue this. I've got a lot to discuss here that I had pulled out. A lot of what I pulled out of this ordinance, a lot of people have the same opinion as me.
My name is James Drew, and I live 50 Briarwood Hill Road in Exeter. And everybody here is very interested in zoe rowing facilities. Just want everybody to know that there's one large one in Providence. It's 100,000 square feet. And if anyone's interested, you can just go take a look at it. It's called Gotham Greens. And it's probably the most similar to what they're proposing, that we can thrive to.
Letitia Davis. I live at 296 William Reynolds Road. I came tonight hoping to get a lot of answers about this project. But one thing I haven't heard mentioned at all tonight, we live in the United States, we're supposed to be free, we have private property rights. Those things I haven't heard any discussion about tonight. And the Schardner family has been farming there for a long time, and they ought to be able to make a living on their property. So that's all I had to say about that, and I look forward to actually getting some answers to a lot of the things that were brought up, water being one of the big issues. Thank you.
Okay, members of the council, I'm sure we all have a lot to learn, and I got a few to start off with. Sitting here discussing with our council members. I'm going to go ahead and some comment I had, a lot of what I picked out, a lot of people here picked out. But what Jim says we can do is we can sit here and question him now. And like I have a lot of stuff, they're going to have to give us the answer back anyway. We can continue this public hearing so they can give us this information that we need. I'm going to start with some of the stuff that I had.
Yes, sir.
Okay. One of the biggest concerns I've had in the last two months is marijuana cultivation. And I've even met the town council president from North Kingston and another council person over there, and that was one of their major concerns. And I'm sitting here doing my homework Monday night, and the same thing that the one gentleman picked out under special districts, it says Controlled Environmental Agricultural Overlay District. Now, number one, definition, high, high-value plant species. And then you have agricultural-based products at the bottom. For me to even consider, this is one of the items that I picked out. For this to even get any thought from me, marijuana would have to be prohibited in one of these overlay districts.
We had that in our ordinance originally when it went in front of the planning board. We will be happy to add that back into our application.
That was one thing I seen. And of course, you don't have your people here now. I'm familiar with greenhouses. What you called is a, but not limited to, combined heat and power generators. And my question is exactly what are those, you know? So we have to wait for your people to come back with that. Paragraph three there. A, number three, yeah, number three, must be within areas identified in a comprehensive plan as appropriate in the comprehensive plan for agriculture. Has your plan showed that?
Our planner will show that, and will show that there are agricultures and allowed use in all zoning districts in Exeter.
Okay.
Use the light.
And I guess like one of the most, one of the most controversial things is they're screaming about industrial solar. It did demand, this is, I'm not going to use your building as an example. This is an ordinance. We're not talking about what being built. Access, you're allowing solar to be an accessory use, accessory use by right. Is that correct?
It would be, it would be an accessory use. If this isn't on, I apologize.
How about no?
Is it on? No, thank you. It would be an accessory use by right to an allowed use of CEA. And the CEA to be allowed would have to come before this port and get approval for that block and that site.
Okay. And the other sticking point with solar on this, I'm going to go to the last page of the ordinance. Applicants shall commence construction and attain all applicable permits for primary use no more than 365 days from the commissioning of a secondary use, which means you're going to be putting the solar before the greenhouse facility, correct?
At this point, we can certainly change that legislation to address that they either occur concurrently or that the greenhouse would be built or constructed first. That seems to be a point that the council, a number of votes have expressed a concern about, and something we can change and work with the council on.
The other major issue, I'm trying to look for it. Well, when I was reading this, and I'm thinking, you're not going to get million-dollar greenhouses everywhere. It just doesn't work with them. Because somewhere in here, somewhere in here, they add where anybody going before using this overlay district would have to provide three years of scheduled F IRS tax forms. Anybody unfamiliar with that, you have to be an active farm to be supplying scheduled Fs. So a solar developer is not going to come in, buy 100 acres of woods, cut the trees down, put a greenhouse and a solar farm up, unless he's been farming on that piece of property for three years.
And that was our intent in doing that, was to limit it to farmers and not, we desperately want to avoid this statute being improperly utilized. You can quite clearly see here that you have a farmer who's proposing this and a farm family. We would welcome any restraints to council. Things are appropriate that don't impact the ability to construct a CEA, but ensure that it is a... that it is an agricultural primary use with the solar as a secondary or accessory use.
Okay. The other issue, and this is something, you know, I'm going to give you, I'm going to give you my copy because I can print it off again. These are the concerns from Exeter one. You can have that because I can print another one off. That's their concerns with the fire district, with Exeter one. And that's something that's really got to be, I mean, it's going to be, it's got to go by size, you know? I know what the commercial code is, you know, anything over 10,000 foot, you got to sprinkler. But I can't envision saying someone putting up four acre, a four-acre greenhouse facility, which is going to be a small mom-and-pop operation, and sprinklers would be prohibited. So something's got to be looked at there. You're going to have to get some answers on that fire safety bit. And it's going to have, these are stuff we're going to need.
We will provide you detailed technical information in that regard.
And that's pretty much what I had when I was reading it. A lot of thought came to me where smaller operations, four, five, six-acre greenhouses, and I'm using your .65 as accessory, you know, these are very small solar facilities that if it's on a small project. It seems to me it would probably help a smaller farmer a lot in this town.
We want, I know I can speak for Tim and saying his goal is to preserve farming and to quote him, "We are one generation away from losing all of our farms due to the increased pressure on land and land uses and increased value of land here in New England." New England has historically been land-rich and land-inход and cheap asset. As we all know from the value of our homes, that is no longer the case in New England.
I don't have any other questions or comments. If anybody else on the council does, Christine?
I have a statement, Mr. President. I'm not against this, not for it, but I don't like the way you guys are going about building already. In my opinion, I'm a small business owner, and I think that is definitely at least a gray area as far as whether that's a building or a greenhouse. And to move forward, to me, is a little pushy and a little arrogant. I wouldn't have done that because there's a lot of risk as the investment. And I think that sheds a bad light on it. Hopefully, that'll be ironed out with the laws and what, you know, what is allowed or what isn't allowed.
We will be happy to provide some documentation from the state in that regard.
Anybody else in the council have any comments or questions?
I'd just like to observe what I, what I sense has happened here in the last few months and officially the last month or two. And what we have before us is a zoning amendment that will legitimize what's already under construction in a residential area. And it needs, in my opinion, this amendment in order to legitimize that site construction in what is a residential zone. So as Commissioner LaFabe's commented, the process has begun. We're seeing it, we're seeing the construction. And now we have before us a zoning amendment that would authorize or legitimize that kind of construction. That's how I see what's before us. And I really agree, I don't think this was the right approach. Given the concerns that Dan has expressed, I've raised the issues about Exeter number one, the concerns they wish to see or think we should address in this ordinance. As I said before, we much prefer to put this one aside and ask them to recreate, go back to the planning board, start a process, we're going to amend it, proposal. That's my suggestion here tonight.
No, I agree with what Cal said.
Okay, I got, going through my notes, I got one more thing to address. Decommissioning on the solar field, that's something that someone brought up that is very important, I know.
And we'd be happy to, we can put forth that plan. I believe that part of this plan is that the solar field would have to go back for development plan review to the planning board. And that would be, part of that process is submitting a decommissioning plan. So that is certainly something that we anticipate doing and would be, would be in the normal course of any solar development.
I think we need a decommissioning plan as well for the greenhouse.
That's certainly something that you would have your prerogative if you were to pass this ordinance to include in there. Be happy to work, to speak to the constructors of the greenhouse as to how that would be put together, and we can present to the board something to that effect if that is important and a concern that is being raised.
Okay. You've heard all the comments tonight from everybody, so you know you've got a lot of work to do.
Looking forward to the opportunity.
Okay. Okay, I want to put a motion on the floor to continue this public hearing. And once again, with September 22nd, could you have everybody available?
Yes, those dates that we provided, we would have everyone here. Everyone has already been vetted to those dates.
Excuse me, but I thought we decided tonight was the public hearing.
We, if we close this public...
Yeah.
Hang on, hang on. I asked Jim before I did this, if you close the public hearing.
Well, I second the motion to continue the public hearing at a later date.
With advertising?
We can advertise.
Same thing as we did today. Just again, with more new people, and you guys, wonderful, to show up again, do it all again, continue. We don't repeat ourselves, we can continue where we are.
If we close the public hearing, we're going to re-advertise anyway. I mean, we leave it open, everything's still here on the table. They're going to bring us the same stuff, we just pick up and continue. So if you're getting the advertising which isn't required, then you still agree to pay the advertising?
Yes.
Okay.
I know it's not required, but I feel like the public has a right to know when there's going to be another meeting about this, aside from these fine folks.
I'm making sure he pays for it instead of us doing so. We've got a motion in a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, and my only discussion is the question that Frank Marr asked earlier. One or two experts couldn't attend, but a five, four to five-week notice, three to four, whatever it was. And now we find out yesterday that we can't continue tonight, that these folks can't get the answers that they've seen, that they've saw. And I think it was wrong. I think we should start over again.
Any other discussion on the motion?
I agree with Cal in that aspect.
Okay, all in vote? All in favor? Aye.
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 Approve this to continue the meeting? Okay, so we pass it to continue the public meeting.
Mr. President, I would like, just for the record, to get a clarification. We've got two documents here, one that Councilman Ellis spoke to, and then one that I had a copy of, that I believe we all had a copy of. The one that Cal spoke of was dated July 5th. The one that I spoke from was dated July 12th. They're both, from Mr. DeFrancesco, are building inspection. And they contradict each other. So we need clarification on that. I mean, the one on the 5th says, and the section circled by Calvin was, "Today I called and spoke with the current state building commissioner, James Cambio, about permitting for the Schatten structure. He agrees with me that this proposed structure does indeed require a building permit." But then the one from the 12th, also, also from Mr. DeFrancesco, after that, follows up and says, "I have received correspondence from the former state building commissioner that no building permits are required from the greenhouse facility." Chapter 31, and we've all got a copy of this document which you referred to, which is, in my opinion, very vague. So I would like to get clarification going into the next meeting from our building inspector because we're in a situation with the Schatten facility, up until recently, was moving gravel around, was moving topsoil around. Now we got a foundation in. So if we've got a foundation there, should there, or should there have not been a permit hold? And I think you need to have an answer to that. All right?
I know you keep working on that.
Well, I mean, it's confusing because the two reports contradict each other. And I think this rocks the map.
All right. Do you have that too, Steve?
We will work with your building official, and we'll get some clarification from the state officials in that regard.
You'll have everybody across to the next meeting?
Absolutely.
I have a question. I'm confused about the next meeting, so is that going to be a public hearing with the experts and we can still bring our questions, have our three minutes and talk to the experts?
Yeah, it's going to be a continuation of this public hearing. We did not close it. So they're supposed to report more information or get more answers.
And we can participate?
Yep. It's going to be advertised, it's not required to be advertised. All right. I think we're good, Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Can I appoint a order? Dan, please appoint a order.
Can we stop all operations at the farm until we get our [inaudible] answer?
Right now, Olivia, with the information we have, talking to the building inspector, they do not need a building permit because it's a greenhouse. That's what's in that documentation.
The greenhouse is [inaudible].
He's been down, I'm going to get over on him. I haven't talked to him in a week or so. He's been down here a couple of times a week, and he's going back and forth finding it. I mean, some of the stuff, yeah, they're going to need a building permit, but when you stay off, it's very, very vague.
I know. But we can't stop or put [inaudible].
Not very good. Okay. Any other administrative issues?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Aye, second. All in favor? Aye.